Read the notice, the Board of Commissioners in the City of Mount Juliet will have a public hearing on Monday, June 12, 2023, at City Hall at 6:15 to consider the following items on second and final reading. I mean fiscal year 2223 budget ordinance 2232 for issuance proceeds and appropriation of funds for repair of traffic signals. Adopt an annual budget property tax and sewer rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st through June 30th of 2024. I mean, the land use, I mean, amend the land use from medium density, low density residential annexation approval of plans of service and rezone from Wilson A1 to RS40 PUD and adopt the culinary master development plan for the property known as Traymore PUD. Approximately 317 acres located at Bender's Ferry Road and Gay Winds Drive map 32 parcel 29 parcel 30.01 parcel 31 and 31.01 located within the city's average growth boundary. And the fourth item is to amend part B of the Unified Development Code zoning regulations by amending Article 8 overlay districts overlay districts section 8201.4 relationship of planned unit development PUD regulations variations on equal satisfaction of public purposes and section 8207.3 minimum lot size for active adult senior lifestyles 55 plus communities. The public is invited to comment on these. We have four items. If you'd like to make a comment on any of these four items, I'll open up the floor. You will be recognized for three minutes. We will go until our time for our regular meeting to start at 6:30. We'll also have a public hearing at the regular meeting as well. So if you do have a comment on any of these four items, I'd invite you to the podium to make your comments. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Jim Pulbright. My property is at 258 Pole Cat Road. And I want to talk about the Traymore project. Until something is done about the infrastructure, specifically roads used by residents leading to and from the proposed project, it should be indefinitely delayed. I challenge the commissioners here tonight who have the final say to try traveling east on Lebanon Road toward 109 any weekday afternoon at rush hour. On a good day, it will take several minutes at least to reach the light at Bender's Ferry Road, all because the two lane road for half a mile is only two lanes and it should be widened to four. The bottleneck that narrows Lebanon Road needs to be widened to four as soon as possible. Likewise, in the morning rush and even at other busy times, the traffic leaving the area north of Lebanon Road and going south of the traffic light at Bender's Ferry causes a backup, sometimes extending to the Joy Church and beyond. The main reason for that backup could be largely eliminated if the intersection where Bender's Ferry joins Lebanon Road were widened to include a dedicated right turn lane. As it is, vehicles cannot make a right turn on a red light on onto Lebanon Road if one car at the head of the line is waiting for a green light to cross over Lebanon Road to Golden Bear. It is obvious that the Mount Juliet Police Department is aware of this issue because every Sunday without fail, they manually manipulate the traffic light there to accommodate the rapid exit of traffic from the Joy Church. While this is being done, I might point out the eastbound traffic on Lebanon Road backs up almost like rush hour during a weekday. All of this will be worse when you add more homes for the Traymore project and for the subdivision to be built on the west side of Bender's Ferry. Traymore wants to build homes at this proposed site. Traymore should pay for the road improvements or the commissioners here should delay the project until those improvements are made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public comments? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Phil Hill. I live at 528 Gay Winds Drive, also on a couple parcels on the north side of the Traymore proposed development. One thing I'm disappointed about is that at the planning commission meeting, I did not attend the last commission meeting, but at the planning commission meeting and a number of other places, some officials have been saying, well, they'll just go to the county and do the same thing. They'll just go to the county and do the same thing. Here we'll have more control. Well, I took time last week to visit down at the county with Tom Bocher and the planning office. The fact is that they will only get 129 lots if they go through the county. So if they come through here and y'all approve it, you're going to double the size of their lots. I don't doubt that this is going to happen one day anyway, but if you are going to double the size of lots, I hope you're going to get a lot, a lot of improvements. Now, I know there's a lot of people that want to see, or some people that want to see sewer go down Bender's Ferry, and that's really what this is all about, but I'm just disappointed that some people running around saying they're going to get the same thing if they go to the county. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else comments for the commission? If not, we'll adjourn this public hearing and we'll reconvene at 6:30. All right. Seeing none, we adjourn until 6:30 for the regular meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. Today is June 12th, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have a quorum present pursuant to city code 62210. So we're here and we can conduct this business of the City of Mount Juliet. And I'll start by saying this. I'll say good evening to everyone out there. I want to thank you for attending this meeting of the commission. My name is Mayor James Manus, and on behalf of the commissioners and staff, I want to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Tennessee law gives each Tennessean the right to attend the city commission meetings and to observe how government is doing business. We appreciate that you take time out of your own personal schedules to be here tonight and to see how the government works. So that the next item on the agenda is to set our agenda. If there's no objections, I would like to separate 81 and 82, which are on consent to be read separately. We've got, I've got a proposed amendment from 81 on the advice of our legal team. So hearing no objections, we'll set the agenda as published with 81 and 82 will be read separately. We have 167 page packet, six items on unfinished business and six items on new business. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, you can get one at the wire baskets by the door where you came in. If you're watching remotely online, the agendas are available also online. The agenda is the, is your guide to the topics that we'll be discussing tonight. Next item is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'd ask Chief James Hambrik if you would come to the podium and lead us in the invocation and pledge.
We stand, let's pray together. Holy Father, we come before you tonight and Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for this day that you blessed us with. Your word declares that men ought to always pray and not faint, and so we thank you for this privilege of coming before you. We ask that you would just have your way in these proceedings tonight. We pray your blessings upon our city elected officials, Lord, our city staff. We just give everything over to you. The way we thank you for being blessed to live in the city, Lord, to wear your values of uphold, Lord, and we stand on your word. And so we just pray that you would just bless those that are less fortunate than ourselves. Again, Lord, we just give way to you tonight. Pray for wisdom, knowledge and understanding through this meeting, and we honor you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, thank you for leading us in the pledge and the invocation. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and this is from the May 22nd meeting, the regular meeting. Have a motion? Second, any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The minutes carry. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. In order to conduct effective businesslike meetings, the commission has adopted rules for how these meetings will be conducted. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving and ensuring that all points of views are heard and considered and providing for common courtesy. In just a few minutes, I'll call for anyone who wants to make a comment during this time, anyone wishing to address the commission may do so pursuant to chapter 2, article 2, article 2, section 220 of the city code for three minutes. Although we, although we may ask that, I'm going to ask that you wait until you're addressed and observe some simple rules with that. At the beginning of the presentation, please tell us your name and address for the record. Please address all comments to the mayor. Do not ask questions to commissioners or staff members, and if necessary, I will direct someone to answer a specific question or comments, but however, the board is under no obligation to respond to questions. And the third thing is to please avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or other inappropriate conduct. And with that, if anyone would like to address the board of commissioners, we will open the floor and the podium is open, just come forward and supply your name and address.
Good evening. Ryan Lovelace, CSTG, 2305 Klein Avenue, Nashville, here for the Traymore project, which Pulte Homes is the builder and developer on. I'm really here to answer any questions you guys might have when the item comes up and just ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Michael. I'm an attorney with the Thompson Burton Law Firm in Nashville, and I'm here on behalf of the Costco project out on Rutland Road. I wanted to let the mayor know we're very appreciative of the city staff's ongoing efforts to cooperate with us and carefully work through some of the remaining details. And while there are a very select few details remaining that haven't quite been sorted out, it's ironic that the next city council meeting will not have a quorum and therefore not take place until the first meeting in July. The timing works out really well for all of us to have a chance to sit down and finish that out. So as much as anything, on behalf of the development group from Costco, we wanted to say thank you for your ongoing cooperation, pay a special compliment to Mr. Martin and the entire city staff, and even a compliment to Mr. Barlow, the former member of the city staff, who has continued to try to chime in with things he remembered and help along the way. We're very appreciative of that and thankful for good city staffs and municipalities like these all across the country that are helpful to us, and we thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Unlike the planning commission, we generally don't take citizen comments at the item unless, unless you're called, called upon. So name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Maynard. I'm at 100 Westwood Place. I am just here tonight to say thank you. We, I am with Pulte Homes Tennessee. I'm excited to present this Traymore project to everybody tonight. Just wanted to let everybody know a little bit about who we are if Pulte doesn't ring a bell. We also have John Whelan, Centex and Del Webb Communities. So we have been in the Mount Juliet area and in middle Tennessee for many years. We're very excited to be here tonight and excited to potentially bring this project to Mount Juliet. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a commission comments or citizen comments? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Scott Tyler. I live at 950 Gay Winds Drive. I was, I was here for the May 8th for the first reading of the three ordinance with respect to the Traymore PUD. And I just have two requests, Mr. Mayor. Number one, that you and your commission hold yourself to the same standards that you ask of the citizens. And number two, that you vote in the best interest of the citizens. One of your commissioners on the May 8th made state, he asked that the citizens not talk about things that they are not experts of or things that aren't facts. He then made statements that implied facts, including that the, if the city of Mount Juliet didn't approve the Traymore PUD, that the Wilson County would. We know from Phil Hill visiting the planning commission of the county that that is factually incorrect. And in fact, if they went to the county, which they haven't, they would only be approved for 129 homes, not the 249 they're trying to approve. And number two, he stated that you would have to explain to the citizens of Mount Juliet why you didn't approve the PUD. And in fact, I think what you'd really have to explain is why the traffic, which is already bad, is only going to get worse and why, God forbid, a house burns down or a loved one gets hurt because emergency services can't get to them in time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close citizen comments and move on to commissioner reports and comments. All right. Seeing none, I will close commissioner comment, or excuse me, citizen comments. And with that, I'll recognize our vice mayor, Vice Mayor Trevette.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, residents, for coming out tonight, and it's great to see the girls softball team. Congratulations to them again. Great season and looking forward to already moving forward to the next season. You know, I enjoy all those games, getting out to hang out with the students and so forth. Obviously, there's a couple of things we want to bring up just for, you know, come out in our area. Actually, in my district, we got the Southern Rhythm Cattle Company over on June 15th, 17th, excuse me, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. You know, for the folks that may not know, you know, this, this local business, they actually have a really good, different types of meats and so forth. You know, we always tend to drive past, you know, that residence over there. It looks like a small farm, but they have a good product and they're doing everything that they can to get the citizens to come out and get a chance to hang out with some farm animals as well as have some fellowship with their neighbors. So looking forward to heading out there. Also, we got the June 15th Market Night with Charlie Daniels Park over there from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Mr. Rocky and his team are going to be helping out with some food trucks and also some activities out there. We've got the July 15th celebrating, you know, MJ and Car Show. Looking forward to seeing everybody else out there. And also, we'll be having a good, actually a good friend of mine and actually War Hippies and Scott Brown, Scooter Brown Band. I actually helped bring them in to, to help celebrate the 51st anniversary for the city. So that was great there. And then the last thing I have is just want to remind everyone about safety. You know, with our kids in our neighborhoods, you know, we're getting into more of an activity. Our kids are running out. Actually, in my neighborhood, it seems like I've never seen so many kids or, you know, boys and girls out there fishing, out there in the common, common space of Hickory Hills. I think just today, I think we had about 13, 14 kids out there fishing. It is awesome. So, but at the same time, you know, I start thinking about all the cars driving by, the construction and, and all the distractions that we have, whether if it's a cell phone or just everything else that's in our car. So just please be alert, think about what you're doing, prepare your driving and, and just make sure that you get from point A to point B safely and know your surroundings. So, Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll recognize Commissioner Hector.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. My wife just texted me and told me to speak into the microphone. Can you hear me? Anyways, also want to welcome some family members into town. Uncle Chuck, Aunt Sarah, I think Aunt Sarah, right? Isn't that right? And my in-laws, Brenda and Terry Reed. Appreciate you all coming out and everybody else, for that matter, coming out this evening. Got some big items on the agenda tonight. It's going to be an interesting night, I'm sure. Regrettably, bad timing on my part, but missed the, the fire station hose cutting. I was down in Pensacola relaxing and actually flew back for this meeting tonight, so I'll be back down there tomorrow morning. But I regrettably had to miss that, but it looked like you guys had a good time, got it done. So a couple of things, just public service announcement. I know the temperatures are getting hot. I may have said this last time, but please be aware of your, your pets, leaving them in the cars. Please don't do that. Otherwise, you may end up with a busted window or God forbid, something happens to your pet. So please keep them in mind as we start heating up during the summer, summer days here. I do want to congratulate the Green Hill Girls Softball State Champions. They came out this evening, early, earlier today, so earlier this evening. So I do want to congratulate them publicly. And then also I have something on script I have to read here. So please help promote July 15th, Celebrate Mount Juliet and Car Show. That is going to be headliners, War Hippies, Scooter Brown and Donnie Reese. I pronounce that right? Along with also featuring my wife, Cherie Hefner and the Cedar Creek Boys. So July 15th, Charlie Daniels Park, be sure to mark that on your calendar and come on out. Appreciate it. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We recognize Commissioner Malali.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank Representative Susan Lynn for recognizing through the state legislature our 50 years as a birthday anniversary, as a, being incorporated as a city. And also again, congratulations to the Green Hill softball team for their state championship. I can relate to this because back in the day I played softball, although I was, saw a slow pitch, it was right before fast pitch became popular. So I won't say what year, but we were state championships and we went on to become 12th in the nation. So this is very exciting for them and very excited for them. And I know how, I know how that is, the energy and you playing as a team. So congratulations to them. Again, on the Fire, Mount Juliet Fire Department had the, as he said, the hose. I go to a lot of ribbon cuttings, but I've never been to a hose cutting where the, the fire hose was put together and that was in place of the ribbon. So that was kind of cool. So it's good to, and I've been up here since 2019, and when you are up here and you help fund projects, it feels real good and it's exciting when you get to see them completed. That's a good feeling there. So I know we're excited about that station finally opened. And I'm going to promote the Ray Daniel Cruze Inn on July 15th at the Celebrate Mount Juliet, which actually is our second year for the Celebrate Mount Juliet. And if you don't know, Ray Daniel owns our Chick-fil-A here down south Mount Juliet Road. So this is a free admission and free admission and entry, and we're looking for classic and vintage cars. The first 150 participants get a free door prize, a goodies bag filled with coupons. participants get a free door prize, a goodies bag filled with coupons. And if you are bringing your car and want to promote it on Facebook beforehand, please let our PIO, Justin Beasley, know about it. And the roll-in is from 2:00 to 4:00 PM that day, and the car show is from 4:00 to 9:00. So during the event. So if you have a vintage or classic car, bring it out and show it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, we'll recognize Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mayor. My very, very brief. I just want to thank everybody for their participation and the incorporation, the cooperation, rather, of getting together the new fire hall over on South Green Hill Road. There was a lot of years put into getting that headed in the right direction. And so the Wilson County School actually helped us out with that. A lot of negotiation went into getting that land over there. And then, of course, I thank our former Fire Chief Jamie Lufman for his participation in getting that that station built. And I'd also like to make sure that we we thank interim chief Joey Edwards for all his work and everything that he's done to get that going. And we cut, we didn't cut that hose, by the way, Commissioner Hefner, that was, we unscrewed it, did we not, Mayor? It was
That's very correct. No, no government property was destroyed in
During the making of this, right. We would have to put that on a supplemental list of some kind or another if we cut it. So but it's open. And so now we're running calls. And those of you that don't know the history of the Mount Juliet Fire Department, we started out, and I told the mayor something he didn't know that we were actually talking about this, myself and a couple of others in 2007. And we had all this, this whole Mount Juliet Fire Department thing laid out on a Waffle House napkin in 2007. That's why we planned things back then. Just look at Providence, you can figure that out. In 2012, we get a letter from the county saying, we're not handling your fire anymore. Y'all might want to look at doing this. Well, I think the quote was step up and put your big boy britches on and build a fire department. I think by any stretch, if you look at it, that's exactly what we did. So with the fire department, with the emergency services that we've got, now with the ambulance that we took over and put in place to to make sure that our Mount Juliet residents are getting their their bang for the buck, you can't ask for better than what you got in emergency services between the Mount Juliet Police Department and the Mount Juliet Fire Department. So I really want to thank everybody that came out and all the participation that we got. And we're looking forward forward to even better than what we've got right now if that's even possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, one more?
Justin Beasley handed me this little piece of paper. Here's Justin. And we're supposed to talk about the July 15th Celebrate Mount Juliet and the Car Show. And as Commissioner Malali was talking about Ray Daniel's Cruise Inn, Ray Daniel's that has that owns the Chick-fil-A. They were talking about getting everybody through the COVID lines many years ago. And they said, if you want it done right, and you want it done fast, give it to Chick-fil-A. They can get you in and out of there pretty quick. And so our hats off to Ray Daniel and the things that he's been able to accomplish in our community. So get ready for the Cruise Inn. That is on July the 15th, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. And it is free. And of course, we'll be had the concert in the park celebrating Mount Juliet. We call it Celebrate MJ. So come out. It's free. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Since no one's mentioned it, I want to point out on July 15th, we have a Celebrate Mount Juliet and Car Show. And I understand Chief Hambrick is going to be singing a community song, our community song, which is Community Strong. So he's going to be singing that there. That's what was on my note to point out, folks. So get that out of the way. I'll just quickly want to thank Representative Lynn and for bringing the Senate Joint Resolution here for us and presenting us to it. And I know that's, as she told the story of how it took a while to get that through with all the challenges that they faced with COVID, and want to mention the Green Hill softball team for their win with the state championship. They were both of those parties were here at 6:00. And well, I guess Representative Lynn recognized us and we recognized the softball team. So glad that they were able here. I'm glad you did mention that no hoses were destroyed in the process of opening that new station because we we like to take care of our hoses here. Those are bought with taxpayer money. So we got the station open. It is operational and and they're doing a knockout job there and appreciate their efforts and everybody, elected officials and all the support that's that's carried over the years. I did just want to point out one thing. This Sunday, we we did the hose decoupling ribbon cutting, whatever you like to call it on Wednesday. And this Sunday was the 10th anniversary of opening our first station, which is down in Providence. So I say that for this reason. We have a department that's been operational for less than 10 years. When we opened the station down there, that was still about four months of of work that went into it that got before the fire department became live here in the city of Mount Juliet. So sometimes it's easy to look at it and take for granted what all and how much has been accomplished in the short period of time that they've been operational. But they have put a lot of work and a lot of dedication in taking the city from ISO level five to what we are now with the three and the protections that we have. And it's been a, it's been a long journey since receiving the resolution that, you know, the city's going to be without fire coverage soon to where we are now. And I appreciate everyone's effort and involvement in that. And last, if you'll indulge me with just a little public or private personal comment here, but my daughter, I'm very proud of her. She she wrapped up her her final recital with dance. And they say, they say a parent, they say neither the parent nor the child knows when a when the the parent picks that child up for the last time because at some point, you know, you just, I don't know why, we just stopped picking up our children. They get too old or whatever the case may be. And no one knows it's their last moment. But this last week, it was my last time to see my, see my daughter dance in her final recital. So I know a lot of you out there in the same boat. You've got children, they're graduating and going on to college. And it's a transition. And I kind of know some of the struggles that you go through on that. So I'll say again, congratulations to the class of 2023 and whatever their future endeavors are, wish them nothing but the best of luck and whatever they choose to do in the future. And our last thing on our agenda is to recognize our city manager before we get into our, our business portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, all those in attendance tonight that come out and share the evening with us and those watching at home. I got the opportunity to meet Commissioner Hefner's, some of his relatives here. And I always say hi to mom and dad. They're always smiling, love their smile. So I made the mistake. I've been right-handed for nearly 60 years. I made the mistake of shaking hands with Mr. Chuck. And I can still not feel my right hand. So if I wave at you tonight doing this, thank you, Chuck. Appreciate that, buddy. I'll let you get a kick out of it. But it's so nice to meet you folks and welcome you to Mount Juliet and come watch Commissioners, our elected body, and our work in progress and process. I don't usually talk this long. I don't want to set up any warnings or worries that it's going to be long. But something happened on Friday, which I thought was pretty cool. And it speaks volumes to the biggest agenda item that we have each year is our annual budget. And for somebody that served here for 33 plus years, and Miss Sheila sitting there is 34 plus years, I think of the days when we didn't have a lot of things and we borrowed a lot of things from other departments and had hand-me-downs and all. And I look at how far our city's come with a property tax of 11 cents and really a property tax that's only existed in reality for about about 10 years. And I think it speaks volumes for the Commissioners and the elected bodies that's come before and the elected body that you see sitting beside before you today is that they task us with excellence. And the excellence is is to take a little and do a lot with. And every tool known to mankind has been given to this city. And that's why the budget process is so important to us is we don't take it lightly because we understand that about $2 million of a $90 million budget comes from property tax. The rest comes from businesses in our communities. Without those business owners, everything that you see, for the most part, would not be possible. So we were very appreciative of what our main mission is, which is to serve citizens and to keep them safe. But without our business community, and I guess you'd say the large amount of sales tax revenue that comes into our city, because we have created what I feel like is a family-oriented community. And I think everybody agree to that. I want to thank all of them because everything we're doing wouldn't be possible without them. And most importantly, of course, without God. And we have a very God-friendly community. We have a patriotic community. And to show you that is that myself and our Public Information Officer were walking Friday. He joins me every once in a while for the walks I take daily. And in one hour's time, in a four mile, four mile walk, we helped three different groups of people. We saw a mother and a 17-year-old daughter trying to change a flat. And if anybody's ever used one of those car jacks that comes with a jack, they're impossible. I call them knucklebusters. They're absolutely useless. So Justin Beasley and I started trying to help change the flat. We got the lug nuts off, but couldn't get the car jacked up. So I called Captain Chandler, who's somewhere here in the room, and asked if him and Mr. Richard Frankage could come help us out. So he brought this truck that this commissioner approved that helps people like that. And it was like literally like a Dale Earnhardt pick root, right? Even the mom had jumped in, she'd helped a lot. And so we were able to help this 17-year-old daughter and her mom get on the way. And they were so thankful. They're out of Lebanon. So we made the rounds and started coming back up and got to about Sonic. And we witnessed a pretty bad car crash where a car, actually SUV, hit a deer. And so instant response is when you see something like that is just to put yourselves in harm's way. So Justin and I ran out in the middle of the road. The deer that had got hit unfortunately was in bad shape. I encouraged the mom and the daughter to stay in the car. So there again, we're in a situation where it's a mom in the passenger seat, the daughter in the driver's seat. And guess how old the daughter was? 17 years old, right? And so we, I guess you'd say we gave the calmly, watched the emergency personnel pull up the police, which were always fantastic. The EMS, the fire, always fantastic. So they got that resolved. And you're feeling real good about your community. And then you get back to City Hall and Captain Chandler calls and says, hey, are you guys close to City Hall? We said, yes. He said, well, can you help? There's a little man and his wife and he's sitting on, he's standing out in front of City Hall and he's, we think he's having a heart attack. So we got out there and calmed him, got him some water and all. And immediately, the paramedics thank you Commissioners for creating one of the few EMS divisions in a municipal city and the entire state, much less the country. It's rare. You don't see it. And immediately, our guys and gals were here, transported this gentleman to the hospital and likely saved his life. Three incidents, four miles, one hour in your city. That's the kind of culture that you're creating in this city. And it doesn't always get shown and always doesn't get mentioned. But that's why budgets are so important is because when you put people first and public safety first, that's what you get. So God bless you all. And thank you all for what you do for city. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we'll move into the business portion of our agenda here, which is the first item is 8-1, an ordinance amend Part B of the Unified Development Code for the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as Zoning Regulations Ordinance 2001-29 adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Article 8, Overlay District, Section 8, 201.4, Relationship of Plan Unit Development Regulations to General Zoning Subdivision or Other Regulations Variations on Equal Satisfaction of Public Purposes and Section 8, 207.3, Minimum Lot Size Active Adult Senior Lifestyle 55+ Communities. Got a motion? And a second, the item is on the floor here. Commissioner Malali?
I have a question. Packet page 17. There's number four under section one. There's number four in red. There's a line in red for section two of this article shall not apply to active adult senior lifestyle 55-plus communities. This was, is that correct in saying this was not in included at first reading?
I think.
It was included. Just curious why it's red.
Perhaps to highlight the change? Yes, ma'am.
The mayor stated that correctly. I always had that in red, just to denote the change. So our planning commission and you guys would know what we were adding to the ordinance.
Okay.
But it wasn't read on first reading also.
It was. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be something equivalent to say Del Webb, I guess, active. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
And I I've been handed this from our legal team. It says 8-1, which is a modification or change to it. Want to ask? Mr. McKay, is this, is this an addition, what you're asking for, like a, like a item number five?
No, just to amend number four.
Oh, amend section four. Okay.
Right.
I'm sorry. I started reading and I thought it'd be quicker to ask than read them all to get down here. So it's amendment. And this says in section four, which which currently is the one in red, is that correct? We're on the same page. Yes. The change is to add the word neither in front of section two of this article, and then insert nor section eight, 201.1, section four of this ordinance, apply to active adults, senior lifestyles, 55-plus communities. So essentially, we're adding the word neither in front of, at the beginning of the sentence, and then after the word article, adding nor section eight, 201.14 of this ordinance. And then the rest will remain as is applies to active adults, senior lifestyles, 55-plus communities. Yes, sir.
And and Mayor, that 8201-1-4 is the provision of the PUD ordinance that prohibits modifications to the general required four area ratios and similar ratios in a PUD. So this is going to eliminate a potential conflict with those sections. So it accomplishes what this wants without conflicting with another section.
Well, I'll make the motion to add the word neither at the beginning and then after article, insert nor section eight, 201.14 of this ordinance. Have a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right. All in favor of the amendment? Please signify by saying aye. Any, any opposed? Okay, that carries. We're back on the ordinance as once amended. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Commissioner Hefner?
Question for city attorney. The project comes in as a 55-plus and is approved as a 55-plus. And I guess this would be for non-PUDs. Is there anything to prevent them prior to building, changing the 55-plus designation? How are we going to codify the 55-plus? Is it done through a deed restriction or how?
Be through a deed restriction or a condition when they come through. And I think we've had some that came in as 55 pluses and then they changed, we're not going to be 55 plus. And that they violate the condition and they didn't get their approval.
Do we need to put anything in here about deed restriction? Or we just?
No, just when it comes, we'll know.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the ordinances once amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries. Next item on the agenda is 8-2, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023, Budget Ordinance 2022-32 for insurance proceeds into appropriate funds for repair of traffic signal. Motion. I heard a second from Commissioner Justice. Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor of 8-2 is red. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? 8-2 carries. The next item is under unfinished business, which is 9A1, an ordinance of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, adopting an annual budget property tax rate and sewer rates for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 2024. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hefner. Budget is on the table. Mr. Justice, did you have an amendment?
Mayor. And what I would like to do is amend, and it's going to be in the capital capital section up here. And if you could help me, help me out with this. I mean, basically, what I want to do for the 25 that's going, 25 million that we had set to go to TDOT, what I want to do is to amend that down to $5 million with the other 20. I think you and I discussed with the bond issue for that 20 as opposed to the cabinet that coming out of the general fund, the capital or capital funds.
Director? Okay, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? You want to remove the 20 million that's in for construction or you?
No, it's 25. This was originally put in.
Yes.
Okay. We want to, I'm asking to amend that to leave five in there.
Okay.
And then the other 20 would be, we would do a bond issue as opposed to that coming out of our, our general fund.
Okay. So you want to add a bond? There's a bond issue for 25 in here. Do you want to add 20 to that?
20 to that, yes, because that that original bond issue was for the PD, was it not?
It was to cover, it was in there to cover the whatever the projects were. So you guys So you guys could decide how you wanted to, to spend that. But we can, we can increase that to the, add twenty to that.
I've been sitting up here for twenty years and we've actually, you know, for, for all the time that we have done this, we've increased and increased, increased the amount of money that we've had in our general fund so that we could pay for some of these projects that we've got. And just watch it in one fell swoop, just be sucked out like a vacuum cleaner. It makes me just hurts my heart. But I don't want the T dot to think that we are not on board, but it's just a matter of how, rather than just how we fund it as opposed to just handing out cash. And we can also, if we want to do the, the twenty-five, as long as we have a contract that comes in. We don't have a contract at this point to fully fund something, so.
Let's, before we do that, your amendment was to, where, the way I understand it, the budget has twenty-five million already allocated for bonds. So you're wanting to increase that to forty-five million?
Forty-five total.
But isn't the twenty and the twenty-five for the same thing?
No, I didn't think so.
Well, the twenty-five is in there to cover a bond issue to cover your capital projects. But it was up to you guys to decide what you wanted to use that on.
No.
You can add the, you can add a twenty million dollar bond in addition to that, which would then reduce transfers from the general fund by twenty million.
All right, okay. So you, your amendment is to increase, to, to increase the bonds from twenty-five to forty-five then?
Potential. I'm, I'm not saying do it at this point. I'm just saying, put that in there as an option for us to do, but not to put in the budget twenty-five million dollars to go to T dot without having any kind of a, a contract in hand for that.
Okay, so there's, is, so is there a second to increase the, the bond amount from twenty-five to forty-five? Okay, have a second here. Commissioner Heffner?
What, um, did you get the latest rates?
Yes. For a fifteen year bond issue, this was at the twenty-five million. The rate was three point four five percent. And then for a twenty year, it was three point seven five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Question goes back to Ms. Hire. So does this bond have an expiration date on it or?
I think this is just what he's wanting to do. You don't have to borrow. This is just putting the money in the budget if you do want to borrow. So it just gives you that flexibility as opposed to coming back to the board and asking for an amendment to do the bonds. It, it's, it sort of separates it and designates it for that particular project, a borrowing for that one.
Makes the number bigger on paper.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And it also reduces the transfers to the general fund. So it, it allows more funds in the general fund.
Okay. Commissioner Malley?
I guess I'm confused on what the extra twenty is for.
And it's just, it, it, it's essentially reduces the amount that we need to take out of the general fund to fund our capital projects. Most of the capital projects are not going to be spent this year anyway. So in the event that we were going to spend the forty-five million this year, we would have a placeholder in the budget to start the process. I guess immediately we'd have to do a budget amendment in order to take out the bonds. Is that essentially what we're gaining here? We wouldn't need to do a budget amendment for the twenty million, we, to the additional twenty million? We could borrow up to forty-five million without a budget amendment, instead of being able to borrow just twenty-five million without a budget amendment.
It would essentially take pressure off of the general fund.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering where the twenty million is going to come from? Would it, wouldn't it have to come from somewhere to be moved over?
No, you would just add it to the capital projects fund as a borrowing. And then it would actually reduce the general fund transfer revenue.
All right, and the five million?
Yeah, the five, five million is, it's, it's already there in that sense anyway. Essentially, the only, the only thing on the floor is just increase the, the bonding amount from twenty-five to forty-five. So it, it, it requires, like, like the director said, you, it's going to leave twenty more million in our fund balance in our general fund that we wouldn't move to capital, essentially what it's going to do. If I get that wrong, tell me.
Nope, that's right.
Commissioner Heffner?
Just confirm and we are getting four point seven five?
And five.
And five. So we're making, we're netting one percent by borrowing. Could actually borrow money and turn around and reinvest it.
Yes.
And make money.
Yes. You just have to watch your timing.
No, I know.
But yes.
No, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Justice, do you have something else to add?
I was going to go to the same direction that he was. I mean, in that we've increased the amount of the, our, our interest on that revenue is. And we've got another amount that we borrowed it with two and three quarters approximately percent.
Before?
Now, the, anything, any bond issue that we got running would be somewhere around two and a half, two and three quarters, correct?
Less than, yeah, it would actually be less than that.
Or less?
When we refinanced, we got very low. It was under one percent.
Okay, all right. And that's a possibility even now. So the money being, I guess the, my point is we've increased the amount of interest that we're getting on the money that we've got now. And then we're, you know, increasing the amount that we, and when we bond, get that money, that interest rate that's coming in is a whole lot less. So we're actually net coming out the positive.
Yes.
Which is something government doesn't normally do. So it's kind of something to brag about, I think. And that forty, or that, that twenty million that I'm talking about leaving in the general fund would then increase the amount of interest that we'd be getting.
Available, yes. Potential.
You have questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Nothing on this particular topic, but the budget still, yes, sorry.
Oh, well, it's not this topic.
No, sorry.
We'll deal with this.
You're still keeping the other topics open, my bad.
All right, all in favor of increasing the, uh, the bond amount from twenty-five to forty-five? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. We're amended one time on this. I'm going to make a, a motion to amend. It's on page forty-four, the general fund EMS expenditures, transportation equipment. Item number nine forty-four to increase that by sixty-five thousand. The purpose being for a backup ambulance. My, um, got a second on it. My, uh, my motion was to in, basically increase transportation expenditures by sixty-five thousand under the general fund under EMS expenditures. And this is for the purposes of a backup ambulance, obviously a used ambulance at that price? Yes, emotion and Commissioner Malley's, all right, we're on the, we're on the table with it. Questions or comments? All right, is there any objections to adopting it? All right, hearing no objections, we'll add that as our second amendment. Vice Mayor, did you have something? You, you said you weren't finished?
Yeah, I was trying to find the line item. Maybe Ms. Hire could help me out. It's for the parks, uh, for the budget item for the, uh, I believe it's for the increase, uh, that Mr. Uh, Mr. Lee needed. Yes. Page twenty-one. So.
I'm sorry, it's on page twenty-one, line two, two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, okay. So my motion is to amend line item two twenty-five from sixteen thousand, five hundred and to increase that by eighty-five hundred and make that a total of twenty-five thousand.
Can you give me the line number one more time?
Yes, uh, line item, uh, two, two, five.
So the motion is to increase two, two, five from what, what about?
That's forty.
Um, sorry. So there's thirty-three thousand in that line right now, but that is to cover two years, right? So if you, if you want to, if you want that twenty-five to carry through next year, I would increase it seventeen thousand.
Okay.
And that would make it fifty. The total would be fifty.
Vice Mayor, is that your motion to increase that to fifty K?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, is there a second? Yes. You got a second? All right. Questions or comments on this? Well then, all right, without objection, we'll adopt as our third amendment. Got an objection then? All right, uh, all in, all in favor of increasing the, the line item total of fifty K? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, it carries by a vote of four to one. We're back on the budget as amended three times. Commissioner Malley? Were you asking for the floor, Commissioner? If not, Commissioner Heffner?
Not yet.
Commissioner Heffner?
I saw the, the summary. Were those, do those changes need to be right, made in?
Yes.
The?
All of the ones on the bottom and the reductions, yes.
Okay.
The only change that was made was the one million added to the engineering last year or last, uh, meeting. So anything else listed under that needs to be adopted at the table tonight.
Okay, so I can amend to reduce these?
Yes.
Okay, I probably need some help with the reference to the line number.
Yes.
And staff is okay with the reductions?
Yes.
Staff's okay with the reductions? Mr. Martin, you okay? Okay, so I'll go ahead and we on amendment number?
Be the fourth amendment?
Fourth amendment. Remove the curd road signal, Mount Juliet Road project for a total cost of five hundred and seventy thousand. And then also adjust the engineering fees for the central pike improvements. It's currently at one million, lower that to five hundred thousand. Total reductions with these adjustments, one million, seventy thousand.
All right, I'll second. So that's, that's a motion to reduce the, the spending on the curd road signal improvement by five hundred and seventy thousand, which will be ten thousand from engineering, sixty thousand from easement, five hundred thousand for construction and to adjust the engineering fees for central pike improvements currently budgeted a million and that will lower it to half a million.
Correct.
All right, any, any questions? All right, without objection, it's adopted. Commissioner Justice?
And I think is, Mr. White, you had an over behind there? Is my light on? Yes, sir. Okay. We, we've had some conversation about the City Creek Greenway that y'all were successful in getting a grant that took it over to the, the ballpark, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right. And I'm looking here, we've got, it looks like that we're supposed to do something here. I'm going to let you kind of guide us through this as far as the process, the funding for this budget that we need to add.
Yeah, yeah, we just got a notice of award last week. So we need to add this project to our capital project budget. We need to add two hundred thousand for engineering, two hundred and fifty-four thousand for construction. And then construction funded by grants, one million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty.
Okay, we don't have to pay the one million though, correct?
No, that's a grant, that's the grant.
Okay, so our portion of that is the two hundred thousand for the engineering and two hundred and fifty-four thousand for the?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
The grant is an eighty-twenty grant, so eighty percent federal funded and twenty percent city funded for construction. We had to, we're, we had to pay for the engineering.
And, and for clarification for anybody that's not familiar with this, this is part of the, the Greenway trail that was created many years ago, uh, through a, a, a partnership with Partas, M Tas and the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Mount Juliet. And I tell everybody that when I drew all that out, it was actually known with the Crayola. It was a crayon. So this is all something that's been going on for many, many years. This is something that's new, except for the fact that we got the grant for a million dollars, that's new. So good job to the public works, Matt and the folks that worked on that.
Phase one just got, uh, completed with construction not too long ago, a couple of months ago. So this is phase two, which will go from Charlie Daniels Park to Lebanon Road and the Little League Park.
And we're going to use the Little League Park itself with their permission, obviously.
As a trailhead.
As a trailhead at that location. What I'm hoping to do is to get that section along the creek bank added to, uh, and maybe get another grant to pay for that and, and use that to, to pave going through the park and further along the creek towards the Wintry Pine subdivision.
Yep.
So I guess what I'd be asking for is a, an amendment at this point for the engineering for two hundred thousand and the construction for two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Is that correct? And we need to amend that into this?
That's to receive the money.
Okay, so that we put the, the construction in and we receive it, balances, it evens it out, correct?
Okay.
Okay, you'll, what you'll do is you'll, um, add the one million, fifteen thousand in the construction funds and then add the one million, fifteen thousand in grant revenue at the top. And then also you need to increase the transfers to and from general fund for four fifty-four. That would be the total.
Okay. So that would be my motion for the amendment then?
Got a second? So we have a, um, our fifth amendment here, which is to, on page sixty-five, which is capital projects fund at the City Creek Greenway, phase two. Item two sixty-eight, engineering increased by two hundred thousand, construction nine sixty-six increase by two hundred and fifty-four thousand and construction funded by grants under nine sixty-seven. That's one million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty thousand, excuse me, one thou, one million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Page sixty, which is capital fund revenue, Cedar Creek Grant Revenue, which will be represented as one million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Page sixty, capital projects fund revenue transferred to general fund, four hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then on page eighteen, general fund expenditures transferred to capital projects funds, four hundred and fifty-four thousand as well. All right, any questions or comments? Seeing no objections to this, we'll adopt it as a fifth amendment on it. I also have a, a second amendment, which is to amend page twenty-four to add sixty thousand dollars for a special census. Got a second? It's a sixty, sixty thousand dollar expenditure I'd like to add on that. Census estimates growth of four thousand people since the last census we took. A hundred and thirty-five dollars a pop, that should generate five hundred and forty thousand dollars annually in state shared revenue, not counting street aid. I think we had a, we had a second, but is there any objections? That'll be our sixth amendment then. Back on the ordinance as amended six times. All right.
We have a piece down here that I'm curious about. And if I miss it, I apologize, but to adjust the engineering fees with the central pike improvements.
Uh, that was part of a Commissioner Heffner's amendment.
And I missed that because Commissioner Trebat and I were, were going with something else over here, but we're lowering that from one million dollars down to five hundred thousand, is that correct?
Correct, I, I don't think, uh, don't think public works thinks we'll need that this year. So we'll probably just put the five hundred thousand back next year if we need it.
All right, and one other thing, I had asked the city manager if we could knock down some of the improvement or some of the, uh, operating costs and somewhere around five percent. Did you, were you able to get anything out of that?
With a few things, I'll come some cheese here that I can discuss, but that'd be the commission and it was, well, I haven't heard anything though. If, if the city wanted, uh, I went through the entire budget. Commissioner Justice had asked me after the meeting if I could look through the budget and come up with some monies for possible cuts. And, uh, one of the things would be is the, uh, two hundred thousand for LED streetlights on Mount Juliet Road, an upgrade there. Transportation for parks, there's two e-bikes in there for ten thousand dollars. Um, machinery and equipment, uh, two message boards convert one of those to one instead of two message boards. That would save twenty thousand. Of course, public works, these are things that, of course, the departments had requested. The PD had requested two e-bikes. If you were to cut the two e-bikes, it'd be fifteen thousand. If you were to cut the two e-bikes, that'd be 15,000. Fleet emissions, 1,000. And then that was all that was in there.
Mr. Justice? I'm sorry. Thank you. Was there anything substantial, any cuts substantial, other than the LED lights that I requested on Mount Juliet Road? Was there anything substantial cuts? So nothing then basically? Well, and I did, to clarify, when I asked you to make those cuts, I'd asked for them not to be out of employees. I didn't want employees touched, matter of fact. And what is the actual raise amount that we're getting the employees this year? And that's six plus? Or is that three, four and two, or how's that working?
It's six, cost of living.
Is there no merit increase?
Yeah, the merit is included, yes.
How much it was, what is percentage on the merit? So is it like?
Two.
So it's four and two then, is what you're saying?
Six and two.
Six plus two, so it's 8% potential.
Yes, but it's not 8% on their salary. The 2% does not increase their salary every year.
So it's, they get the 6%, and then the 2% is off of that. But if you don't give them the 2%, you're not giving them 6% increase.
Okay.
Because they got?
I went to Mount Juliet High School, so you helped me out with math here.
You. The, yeah.
Say again.
So we gave them 2% this year. If you don't give them a 2% next year and you just do six on their salary, it's not gonna, they're not gonna get the full 6%. They're actually gonna get less than 6% because the 2% isn't added on to their salary.
The 6% is calculated with the 2% added.
Right.
So it would be 6% of 98%, I guess?
Yes, they would get, essentially they're getting 2% on whatever that 6% increase is. That's the increase to their salary. It comes out to just over 6%.
Wow.
It's not eight, it's not eight though.
That is one of the most, one of the best governmental instruction, and that's pretty unbelievable. So how do we get them six plus two? How does that happen?
You have to give them 8% in COLA on their salary.
What is the COLA actual listed federally?
It's eight, just over 8%. It's 8.3.
It's 8.3, but we're only giving them six?
Yes.
Okay. Last year.
For every percent that you give them, it costs about 250,000.
It costs the city?
About 250,000.
Okay.
Whereas if you were to increase the merit, for every percentage that you increase a COLA, so if you did 6%, the merit increases. So if you went from six to seven, the merit only goes up $3,700 citywide.
Great sound.
It doesn't, the 2% merit does not add on to their total salary. So we're not adding on 6% to their total salary plus the 2% last year. We're adding on 6% to their salary and the 2% is calculated separate from that. It doesn't get added on.
I've said, Mayor, I've said this year after, you've heard me for many years up here say this, if the COLA is 8%, we need to be giving them 8%. Not six, not five, but they need to get eight. Now, however we need to do this to accomplish that, whether it be merit, is what I would like to do. Any suggestions? I want to make sure they don't get six with COLA being eight.
Just take 500,000 out of the general fund and fund it. That's the only way I see to do it.
Do I have support for that? Is that?
I think staff would be supportive.
I think staff would be, yeah, very supportive. I've been a government employee, I know what it's like. It ain't easy. And these guys work their rear ends off out here and in the hot sun and the winter. And for us to actually fund them less than what COLA is, I don't believe is, I think we could be a little more responsible.
So do you?
That's my motion.
So you can make an emotion to increase the cost of living from, which is the cost of living raised from 6% to 8%?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's on the table. Or on the floor, excuse me. Commissioner Malili.
All right, if we did that, what happens to the merit?
It's still at 2%. That wasn't, that wouldn't impact this.
If you take away the merit, then you don't give them 8%.
Okay, so the merit stays at two?
Yes.
All right.
The merit is completely separate from the COLA.
All right. So for several years, ever how long, our employees weren't up to par as comparable to the other cities, right? And so we had, with Commissioner Hefner's lead on that, what was it, two years ago? Two years? We got them up within 5%. And then last year, we got them up to the same as the comparable cities. So if we don't do this now, are they gonna, are they gonna be under what the other comparable cities are again? How does that work?
I think another way to ask, what are the other cities? Are they giving 8%? Are they giving something less?
Something less. I've not seen 8%. Metro was four. Metro was four.
Certainty in the economy. We don't know where interest rates are going. I'm seeing trend lines now where sales tax revenue is now barely exceeding what we did last year. I've just, as much as I'd like to give them 8%, I just, I don't know, I'm struggling with that. I mean, it doesn't, in overall, 90 million plus budget seems like a drop in the bucket, but it's hard to reel that back once you put it out there, so.
Well, I would add, it's half a million this year, it's half a million next year, it's half a million the year after that, and in 10 years' time, you're looking at $5 million. Commissioner Justice?
I would also like to add, when I go looking at comparable cities, I look at Metro Nashville as the city that I want to do everything the opposite of. I do not and have never wanted to be like Nashville. They have a problem right now retaining employees, huge problem retaining employees. Lebanon, right now, their employment, their police department, their numbers are down. I think I heard their fire department numbers were down. We've always taken care of our employees here because our employees have always taken care of us. Now, if there's another number that we can throw out there, it may be 7%. Yeah, but I'm having a hard time, when I know some of these folks are here struggling to put food on the table because of the inflation. Yeah, and we're not gonna help that situation. It has to be taken into consideration. For many years, I worked for $13 an hour at the Williston County Sheriff's Department. I know what it's like to go out and work two and three jobs. And you know me, I'm not a raving liberal, I'm not crazy, one of those is gonna go out there and I'm not hugging trees and doing all the rest of this stuff. And I want to be conservative, but conservative for a government worker is not a principle, it's a way of life. And we need to look at it like that. I mean, so, you know, some of us sitting up here, it doesn't make a difference. For these guys, it does. So, I mean, if there's something that I can get support for closer to that COLA, I would sure like to do it.
Commissioner Malili?
Can you do, instead of whole percentages, can you do?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we could do a half percentage.
6.75? I mean, you can do that.
Oh, yeah. Whatever you want it.
All right, any questions or comments on the amendment?
All right. I'll amend to 6.75.
Okay, is there a second?
What does that come out to, dollars?
So we got a motion of second to amend the 8% to 6.75. I think it's 250,000 per percentage, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'll divide that thousand, divide it by four, times three. I got 187 and a half.
I'll go with that.
187,500. Better double check my math. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the honor of going to Mount Juliet High School. Commissioner Justice seconded?
Yes.
All right, so reduce the, so the motion would be to increase the COLA from six to 6.75 and reduce the general fund balance by 187,500. Okay? Any questions or comments on this? All right. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries. COLA is adjusted to 6.75. All right, we're back on the budget as amended seven times. All in favor of the budget as seven times amended, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? With that, folks, we passed our budget and a month, or excuse me, a meeting early to meet our deadline for the state with the seven amendments, that is. And last thing I would suggest is a five-minute recess. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, we will recess for five minutes and pick back up on our agenda where we left off. Hello, everyone. We call the meeting back to, have a quorum present, so we'll call the meeting back to order. City manager asked to make a comment on the budget, so I'll recognize him at this point.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor, for everybody that's still here to listen tonight and the commission. It's a big task. The commission works extremely hard. There are always, as you can tell, they have to make some tough decisions sometimes up here, but thank you for your stewardship, your hard work and your public service, and thank y'all for your support. I think you deserve that. And I know it's not proper through Robert's Rules of Order to give you a standing ovation, but we'd give you an applause and stand the ovation if we could.
Thank you, sir.
I know what's coming.
No, I'm not going to play a good tune by y'all. Commissioner Justice?
We have tonight, and we missed the opportunity earlier, actually, with, we've got our deputy chief, Michael Mullins, who has been gone, and he is, uh, he's coming back in the room. I'm gonna wait until he comes back in here.
I saw him standing back there on the way in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you could, Deputy Chief Michael Mullins has been to, was it Quantico? Chief? Okay, so he's been to Quantico. He's one of the very few that actually has gone through the Federal Bureau of Investigations Academy. And so we want to say congratulations. Thank you for being a great representative of the city of Mount Juliet, as you have always been. And he asked me, he gave me five of these challenge coins from the FBI, the Department of Justice. They're challenge coins, and he asked them, they're all encased here, to get to each one of the commissions, so I want to pass those out. If you could, want to give us, if it's all right with the mayor, just kind of give us a brief rundown of how that all went.
Is it okay, Mayor?
You go for it, sir.
Okay. I'm not gonna speak out of turn, but, you know, it's a real experience. The immersiveness of being there for 10 weeks. Obviously, I'm half the man I was when I got, when I left. So there's a lot of, as much mental and academic aside to it, is, there's a physical side to it, and I really can't put into words the totality of it, but it's, it's the fact that you're, I was there with 238 other law enforcement executives from around the world. There was 27 countries there. So learning from what has worked in other agencies, what has not worked in other agencies, and different programs, and just living with these people, just like going to the academy for 10 weeks, was impressive. It was an experience that I would cherish forever. And I appreciate the city manager, the chief of police for giving me the opportunity, and the mayor wrote me a recommendation letter as well, and I appreciate his recommendation letter as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for endowing me, Mayor.
Oh, definitely. That's.
He already has.
Well, with that, continue on with the business here. There's no objection. I'd like to read the next four items together. They're all around the Traymore property. So hearing none, I will start with 9A2, an ordinance to amend the land use plan for the property known as the Traymore PUD located at Bender's Ferry Road and Gay Winds Drive, map 32 parcel 29, 30 and 01, 31 and 31, 01, from median density residential to low density residential. 9A3, an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 317 acres. Property known as the Traymore PUD located at Bender's Ferry Road and Gay Winds Drive, map 32 parcel 29, 30.01, 31 and 31.01, and within the city's urban growth boundary. And 9A4, an ordinance to rezone approximately 317 acres of property at Bender's Ferry Road and Gay Winds Drive, map 32 parcel 29, 30.01, 31 and 31.02, I'm sorry, 31.01, from Wilson County A1 to RS40 PUD and adopt the preliminary master development plan for the Traymore PUD. And the final item is Resolution 9B1, a residue, resolution adopting the plan of services for the property known as the Traymore PUD located at Bender's Ferry Road and Gay Winds Drive, map 32 parcel 29, 30.01, 31 and 31.01 in the Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. Have a motion for those four, and a second. The four items are on the table. All right, Commissioner Mullally?
For clarification, um, the, if this gets built in the city, the lot sizes are almost an acre each, right with the, no? So what it, what it?
Let's, let's hear from our planner, city planner. Ms. Hamblin?
Thank you. So it's an RS40 PUD, which means that it's, it goes by the density of an RS40 subdivision. However, they compensate the lot size with open space. So there's half, half the acreage is open space on this one, so the minimum lot size is the 10 and 15 average per our regulations.
Right. So how much of an acre does that average, like, I know it's a range, like, each lot's not the same, so.
At this point in the, in the project, they have not given us actual lot sizes yet because it's, a preliminary master development plan is conceptual in nature. So they're committed to meet our minimum and average regulations.
Okay. Some of the, some of the residents say just let it get built in the county, and there won't be near as many homes. And then some people say just let it get built in the county because it's not going to perk anyway. Commissioner Justice, can you explain how the county does that on? They, they don't have to perk per lot. They have to do, they now do it by percentage. Can you explain that?
Commissioner, are you asking to recognize Commissioner Justice?
Yes.
All right, we'll turn to Florida Commissioner Justice.
In my experience, what they, they do through the Adena system, the, the Wilson water and wastewater, they actually will find soils in the area, and they will run lines to those soils to accept the waste. And it's a, some people call it a kitty litter system, believe it or not. I've heard it, you heard that, that phrase used. It's a community, uh, a community septic tank. And so you've got numerous homes going into one large location. The issue that I've had in the past with that and continue to have is, and first of all, going out that road, you're going out on, into the peninsula area out there where Old Hickory Lake is the watershed. And Mr. White, if you correct me on any of this, if I'm wrong, but I think I've, I've got it, got it down. So you wind up with anything that happens, any failure you happen, that does happen, goes off into that watershed, goes off, it could go into Cedar Creek, or actually into Old Hickory Lake up there near the, the Gay Winds into the water system. So that is reason that people have heard me say I don't want step systems out there because it's danger. It's not, not a good location, and the results could be disastrous out there for a failed system. Generally, what they try to do is they use one acre for 17 lots. So say for 170 homes, then 10 acres would be used for the step system. That's 10 acres of good soil supposedly that they would drain into. So each house does not have to perk. All it has to do is have a line going to an area that will, will perk. And as they've done over here off in South Mount Juliet area, they actually have lines that will go to and go through good soils, is the phrase that they use. They don't even have to, you get credits at that point. They don't even have to actually, they can take it down to Pine Creek Golf Course. And that's where it's treated and, and used then to, for the, for the golf course itself. Well, we don't have a golf course out that side, so. You know, something to worry about.
Mayor? Do you, I mean, do you want to, you were there at the meeting?
I mean, I just had a conversation with Thomas Scherzer about his reason she's asking me. We were chatting about that earlier. The, the conversation is, it's a, AR, it's not just a residential property, and it is geared towards the east end of the county where you've got more rural zoning out there that would apply to the AR1 zoning. It's not necessarily just to this area in the west end where it's R1 for one acre lots. Now, that's, that is the explanation that I got from Mr. Scherzer's about that. It, it is more, more dictated and moved towards the rural end, Stateville and Watertown. It's where they're actually wanting to apply that AR, is what I was told. AR2, is that right, Jennifer?
Here from our planning director.
They actually just increased the lot sizes for several of their zoning classifications in residential districts. I believe R1 is 40,000, and A1, which this subdivision is, this property is owned, is 80,000 square foot minimum. However, if this developer were to develop this project in the county, all they would have to do is go to the county and ask for a rezone to R1, which is conducive to surrounding zoning. And then we'd be back at the 349 lots that they're proposing tonight. So there are several different, it goes by the different residential zoning classifications within that county designation, and they, they have a chart, and I'll be glad to send it with you guys, but A1 is 80,000, and R1 is the 40,000 square foot minimum.
So it's currently at, at 80,000 with A1, but the county could rezone it to R1 to 40,000?
Correct. And that was just approved, I believe, May the 20th.
Commissioner Mullally?
For me, I supported this at first reading, and for me, I think it's going to build either way, whether it builds in the city or the county. I think it's going to build either way. And the residents up there, and I don't blame you, talk about quality of life. The way I see it, there's more benefits to building in the city to maintain your quality of life, such as the city, the sewer and the road improvements. Because honestly, if it builds in the county, you get nothing. No road improvements, maybe a turn lane, but, and the biggest complaint up there is the traffic. So with the Moss property south, with their improvements, and, and also at Lebanon Road, in this project, to go all the way to Mays Chapel and Liberty Chapel, I see that as improving quality of life, you know, helping. So the way I see it is going to be, build either way. I just think it will. There were suggestions and that, that I mentioned at first reading, things that I would like to see that weren't added as conditions. So I would like to add those. So I'm, motion to add the construction notice, whether it have a flashing light on it to say trucks entering the highway or construction vehicles, whatever. One northbound, which would be south of Mays Chapel, and one southbound, which would be north of Liberty Chapel. So two of those, so I would like to add that. Yeah. Yes.
So you're, and for 9A4, you're wanting to amend that under, would that be Public Works?
Yes.
And that was to add a north and southbound. Repeat that again, please, for me to make sure.
All right. That the developer would add one northbound sign, like on a pole, with the flashing light on it, just to warn people about the construction traffic.
Okay, so it's construction warning lights?
Yes.
North and southbound?
Yes.
On Bender's Ferry?
Yes, on Bender's Ferry.
All right, so that would go under Public Works? So the motion would be to amend 9A4 under Public Works to add north and southbound flashing lights on signage, warning of construction traffic?
Yes, construction vehicles. I have some more. Do you want me to do one at a time?
Let's see if we get a, well, we got a second, okay. Is there any objections to this condition? All right, hearing none, we'll call that adopted. We're back on 9A4 as once amended.
All right, and then I would like to amend to add the street lighting along Bender's Ferry. Everhow, Public Works thinks it's, would be where, you know, placement, where to place along from, from Mays to the entrance further north. So wherever they deem it, where it should go. I think some street lighting needs to be added.
So this, so you're asking for ultimately be responsibility of the HOA there, street lighting?
No, the developer would.
The developer would install it, but the responsibility to maintain it would go to the HOA?
Uh, yeah, I guess it would.
So that would go under Planning Section under 9A4, which is to add street lighting on the, which road did you name?
Bender's Ferry.
So to add street lighting on Bender's Ferry?
From the intersection there at Mays Chapel and Liberty Chapel, up to their main entrance, further north on Bender's Ferry.
Okay. Was there a second on the, the street lighting? All right, we'll recognize Commissioner Justice.
My, my curiosity jumps in here on, is that going to require additional right-of-way? And if so, who's going to be responsible for getting that right-of-way? And then if they don't have cooperation from the property owners, what does that do to the, to that part of the project? So I, I, and that might be a Matt White question. I don't know the answer to it.
Off the top of my head, I don't know the right-of-way width currently on Bender's Ferry and between Mays Chapel and that access point. I'd have to determine that. Also, are we planning to annex the road the entire way? Because it's.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to add streetlights to existing power poles through a contract through Middle Tennessee Electric or something?
That'd be the easiest way.
Just order the lights, have Middle Tennessee Electric put them up, and then have the HOA pay the rigging cost for them?
That would.
I'm sure. Yep.
I, I will agree with her on that, but I, I think that, that as simple as that sounded, it actually adds a complexity I don't know that they comply with. I don't have a problem with it. I just don't know that it's, they may not be able to comply with it. I would love to see streetlights. I want, I want the lights all the way down Nonova Road as well, but.
Let's, let me get your mic on.
Oh.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
In my conversation with the developer, they said that was, they can do that. And we could have them come up and speak about it if you'd like.
Mr. Lovelace, do you have some clarification for us on this street lighting?
Yeah, typically, within a subdivision, when you have streetlights, you have a certain four or five you pick from for Middle Tennessee Electric. If you pick their style, they'll maintain them. I would not want to impose the HOA to maintain these poles down. I would not want to impose the HOA to maintain these poles down uh Bender's Ferry Road. I think if we could just make it a condition that uh uh if you wanted lights to be installed on Bender's Ferry Road, like you mentioned, and just leave it at that, we can figure out the rest. Cause I mean, in the end, you guys just want the lights.
Yeah, and primarily at the intersection of Mays and Liberty and the entrance. Yeah, just some lighting there.
I think this gets to a core issue here, that that's not our road. And the minute we approve this. This this neighborhood up there, that road, everybody's going to look to us to fix every problem with that road. So it's it's lights today, it'll be widening it tomorrow, but. But you said, uh, Mr. Lovelace, you said install the lights, you can figure out how to install the lights, but then who's going to maintain these lights, pay the electric bill ongoing?
Middle Tennessee Electric maintains them. But we typically.
They send a bill to someone.
Right. Within the subdivision, who maintains, I mean, who pays for the lights in a subdivision? Dade's way does.
Vice Mayor just pointed out that that uh his neighborhood pays twenty two thousand dollars annually. For streetlights.
Who does?
HOA.
For for Traymore?
No, that's this is the Hickory Hills.
Oh.
Yeah, so within the subdivision, uh, Jennifer, HOA has to maintain the the lights and pay for the lights.
Well, yeah.
Those light poles going down Bender's Ferry would have to be the same. Would love to keep it closer to the entrance. Um, but whatever you guys decide.
Well, if that's all we can get is at the entrance, then I just would be happy with some sort of street lighting.
Yes, sir.
There. Is that?
Commissioner Justice.
Would you be comfortable if we said that at both locations off of Mays Chapel and off of? Uh, Bender's Ferry in in the Gay Winds Bender's Ferry area, that they make sure that that was illuminated? Uh.
Gay Winds, you're saying?
Well, Gay Winds, I'm understanding is you're coming out right there at Gay Winds, that's going to be a cross intersection, correct?
Correct.
So we would ask that somehow you might work with the the folks in there to to make sure that that's lit up in that area with LED lighting. Uh, I don't need the the orange glow lights like we got down on Matt Jager Road that Kenny's trying to take away from me. Uh, and then also on Polecat Road?
Yes.
Where you come into the uh off of Mays Chapel as well, there'd be lit in that area? Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Yeah, so three locations, I would, I would like that.
Subtle does.
This is three locations to have Middle Tennessee do it or add lights?
Have lights regardless of, I mean, I don't care who does, as long as it's lit up.
Cause they may not be poles that are existing.
Okay, so if it's not a pole, are you going to add a pole?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're going to add a pole and then the HOA is going to take responsibility for the cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So and. So this is street lighting at the corner of of the intersection of Bender's Ferry and Gay Winds Drive, which is the entrance of the neighborhood?
That's one.
Okay, and what was the second one?
Uh, the intersection of Mays Chapel and Liberty Chapel and Bender's Ferry.
So Mays Chapel and Bender's Ferry.
And the third one on Mays at Polecat.
Did we not leave Polecat as a gated entrance? Okay, duck the gate away, alright. Well.
That's not your property, you can't put lights up there, they don't want it.
Yes. Alright, so we have three um three things here, which is to add, your amendment, which was seconded, is to add a street light at Bender's Ferry and Mays Chapel. Which is the, I'm sorry, Bender's Ferry and Gay Winds, which is the entrance of the neighborhood, the second to Mays Chapel and Bender's Ferry Road. And Mays Chapel at Polecat. And you seconded, alright.
Now, would that be pending uh right away or, okay, that would be pending right away? If they could. Okay.
So the poles would go on the existing right away.
Existing.
Okay. So I'll I'll rephrase that and make sure we got it correct to add three three streetlights, Bender's Ferry and Gay Winds at the entrance, Mays Chapel, Bender's Ferry. Mays Chapel at Polecat using the existing right away. Good, good, alright, Vice Mayor.
So I don't know if this question goes back to the developer or also to Mr. White. So the addresses that are across the street, any homeowner is going to be affected by this, it's going to be a nuisance for them. You know, of course, that's my going to be my second question, because I know a lot of these lights do have deflectors on them. And if this homeowner, just so happens to be fifty feet off the front line, they're going to have a a nice little runway in front of their house, so is there any concern there? Or?
Yes, sir.
I would specify that a tip, uh, a light picture that directs the light directly down on the roadway instead of. Like an acorn light that spreads. Out, you want it directed on the roadway to increase safety of the intersection.
So so my second question to this, we're only asking for, let's say, like a light at 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 one of the corners, are we trying to hit both corners? Are we, are we just trying to just say, hey, this is going to be like an entrance, this can be a light?
You want to light up the intersection.
Just the intersection.
Mm hmm.
And if you get a dome facing down, and I'm not trying to question you, but lighting is my, is, you know, is one of my skill sets, so. I'm just telling you right now, you're not going to get the dome unless you get a taller pole, you know, especially and now and all of a sudden you got a flagpole out there that's got a light on it that stands out above the rest of all the other poles. So I understand safety, believe me, I'm I'm all about safety, but I'm also trying to be realistic for the neighbors that are also going to be out there as well, so. Um, it's it's definitely going to be a battle and who's going to be fighting this battle, is it going to be the city or the developer, or is it going to be the? You know, the home or the HOA Association, either way, it's just. You know, this is interesting for the situation that's out there, so my question goes back to, is there any homes that's going to be affected? And and then my second part to that is is um is if we go back to the HOA, uh, that's going to be handling this and we don't get the easement. So how does this work? I mean, obviously, if they're going to only be back in the easement on their property.
Now, this is a public right away.
Public right away only.
This is not even in the neighborhood.
Then how is it the HOA is going to be responsible for this then?
Hey, well, they'll they'll get a, they'll get a bill in the mail and they'll write a check or they'll Tennessee Electric will turn the lights off.
Cause I I mean, I mean, as a as a board member, I don't see an HOA taking responsibility for lights that is not on their property. That's why I don't see this even being, I mean. It just goes back to that part.
Well, this is an, this is an amendment to modify the PUD to make this a condition of the approval for the PUD to build this, so uh. Yeah, Commissioner Justice.
What I I think. We've established enough opportunity here for for staff to hear what we're talking about, and this analyst sitting here also. It's white and chains out here. I think this would probably be something rather than I sit up here and micromanage it at this table, let's send this over. And let them do the approvals on the lighting as opposed to us try to do it, I'm not a lighting expert, he is, but he's one of five, so. Yeah, we'll be sitting up here on that law and talking about a light, so why don't we just give them the approval to work through this process and come in with something through the final master development plan? Our representative for the planning commission is here and he knows what we're trying to accomplish on it, so he'll have another look at it as well, so. Is that okay with you?
Is that a request to withdraw the motion?
That would be my request, if we could, just to let the staff handle that.
Any objections to withdraw? Alright, it's withdrawn. Okay, let's see here, Commissioner Millet, are you asking?
Yeah, well, I had also asked for additional lighting at the amenity center and the dog park, which they agreed to, so I'm I'm motion for the additional lighting in the.
So to amend nine four A for to add lighting, additional lighting.
Additional lighting at the amenity center and the dog park.
Amenity center, the dog park, alright. Is there a second? Alright, is there any objection to that? Alright, hearing no objection, that would be our second amendment to the ordinance.
Uh, and we also talked at first reading about having uh Polecat be the construction entrance. And um, which is one of the reasons I wanted the flashing lights there at the intersection of Mays and Liberty. And um with the signage and the extra lighting is because for safety reasons, that's where the construction vehicles would be coming out. So I don't remember if this was added as a condition to make Polecat the construction entrance or not. If it wasn't, I would like to motion for that.
Is there a second to acquire Polecat be the construction entrance? Our hearing no second, that that fails.
So I will second that.
Okay, well.
Sorry.
That's quite alright, we'll um, we'll get through it. Hey, we have a, we have an amendment that's properly seconded for it to require Polecat to be the construction entrance. Um, I'm going to ask our planner, um. How does that work with the existing phasing on that? Are are they going to be at Polecat when they start, or they plan to start from Gay Winds?
Am I on?
You are on.
In their phasing plan, they have indicated that pole, the entrance to Polecat will be completed in phase one, at least the road, yes.
And and just out of curiosity, I haven't got that up here in front of me, are they changing the name to Polecat? We're going to call it Skunk Lane, I mean.
Well, part of that, part of that road is 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 not in part of the project or in the city, so.
Oh, that was, I was kind of curious about the how it's going to work, now I've got.
I think on the map, it's like road, some letter. I think it shows as street B. Road B. Polecat Road B.
Okay, becomes, it'll be something different.
I I would imagine that they will adopt their own name inside the developments, uh, pending approval from nine one one. And that will intersect into Polecat. As to not complicate jurisdictions, but that's my guess.
Okay, I'm just curious. Um, so we want to keep the construction entrance coming up into Polecat, is that acceptable to planning, you think? Public Works?
Uh, Mr. White?
Does it matter?
I don't think I have a recommendation in one way or the other.
Our city planners uh look like we put her in pain, so.
Well, I'm just curious if anybody at this table has ever driven on Polecat.
I have driven Polecat, I drove the entire lens.
So many times you would not believe.
So, so tell me, would you like that?
Are they not going to have to improve it and bring it up to a standard to, I mean, they can.
Well, we can ask the rippers and representative what they plan on doing on on Polecat there to update that road.
There's no objection, let's hear from Mr. Lovelace.
Yeah, we're required to widen that to twenty six feet, um, the whole stretch of Polecat, uh, with the with um ditch on both sides. So it has to be widened for fire access.
So we're annexing this road anyway, correct?
Not Polecat. That's staying on the county road.
And you, and the road commission is okay with twenty six foot wide lanes?
Well, it's twenty six here, they might make it do twenty eight to meet their standards.
And.
But it's staying in that road.
And you get the right away?
Yeah, for the pavement, yes.
And and just to give you an idea of twenty six foot width of pavement, that's our normal commercial ingress egress.
So a racetrack.
So like a dump, how wide is a dump truck?
Uh, they're all eight feet wide.
So I just wanted you to bear thought on that.
It would be hard for others to have a construction entrance off Bender's Ferry and have to disturb those folks. Um, their 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 homes are pretty tight to the road as it is, and that's that's a lot of construction traffic. We're talking about lumber trucks and concrete trucks, I mean, for the next five years on those folks and Bender's Ferry, I mean, we're widening that road. It's set up to have heavy trucks.
You want to withdraw them?
I will withdraw, but I would like to.
There's no objection, we'll withdraw the motion.
I would like to.
Hearing none.
And with the construction signage, the southbound one moved up. You know, past the entrance.
Okay.
Do I need the motion for that?
I I didn't, you're talking about the blinking signs move past the entrance?
Move move the southbound one further north to it to the entrance.
I'll second, is there any objections to that? Uh, hearing no objections, so we'll modify that first amendment then. Alright, we're on the ordinance that's twice amended here. Commissioner Heffner, sorry.
Um, I had one more, but I was waiting to see if y'all brought it up, so go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Can we get Representative up?
Yes, sir.
I I don't see it listed on here, um, but I think in the first reading, you'd mentioned widening Bender's Ferry Road. Is that, did we not capture that? Down to Meritage or to the?
Moss Farm.
I'm sorry. It's not captured in the ordinance, okay, I'd like to. Make a motion to amend to include the widening of Bender's Ferry from.
Moss Farm to Mays Chapel.
Moss Farm to Mays Chapel.
Through the intersection.
Through the intersection?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a second on it.
Um, would also like to make the condition of the first, um, the condition of the first CO to also include those improvements. Can you also, um. Actually, this is for Mr. White. Can you um, can you walk us through the road improvements that are going to be taking place?
Before we do that, you had an amendment.
Sorry.
That you were asking to, so you were wanting before the first CO is issued to widen Bender's Ferry from, what was the name of the project? Moss Project to to um Mays Chapel.
Correct.
Well, past Mays Chapel, so it includes the intersection.
Correct.
So Moss Project to pass the intersection of Mays Chapel. And you seconded, okay. That's on the floor and you want, you have some questions now?
Um, from Mr. White.
Sure, sure.
Um, well, actually, we want to go ahead and vote on this amendment and then I'll talk about Lebanon Road improvements.
Is there any objections to this?
You also include to tie the first CO into the Moss property completing their road project?
It's already, it's already in here.
That's already in there?
I captured that.
Okay.
First reading.
Okay.
Yeah, all road improvements, I believe, Mr. White, all road improvements have to be done. Uh, prior to the first. CEO. On both, correct? Yeah, so all road improvements. So, yeah.
Alright, is there any objection then to to uh the third amendment being that the. Prior to the first CO issuing that the Bender's Ferry is widened from the Moss Project. Past Mays Chapel intersection? Any objections to that? Or we'll adopt that as our third amendment? Commissioner Heffner?
Mr. White, can we talk about the road improvements um on? Uh, Lebanon Road?
Mm hmm.
And.
I'll first mention the improvements to Bender's Ferry, so between this development and the Moss Farm development. You'll have a three lane section Bender's Ferry from Lebanon Road all the way up to Mays Chapel. Um, a lot of discussion last time about our transportation plan. Bender's Ferry widening to three lanes is actually in our transportation plan. So to have that that project checked off by a development is with no taxpayer money is a is a big improvement. Um, the additional improvement on Bender's Ferry that the Moss Farm development is going to do.
Do you know how much that, you know how much we had allocated in capital projects for that?
We haven't budgeted any.
Okay, it was just in the plan.
It's in our transportation plan for a future project, it's one of the twenty one widening projects that were listed in the plan.
Several million dollars.
Yeah, a lot of. Yeah, a lot of.
Okay.
Um, the other improvement to Bender's Ferry that the Moss Farm development is doing is a southbound right turn lane at Lebanon Road. So there'll be a separate through or a separate left through and right turn lane at the southbound approach to the intersection. Another improvement that the city is doing is a right, an eastbound right turn slip lane from Lebanon Road to Golden Bear. And then, uh, the Thomason development, the Tom Curb Road is going to do a westbound right turn lane at the intersection. These three improvements, uh, will greatly been, or greatly improve the, the operations of the intersection, the signal timings. Anytime you can get right turning traffic out of the way from through lane traffic, you're going to push more vehicles through their intersection in the same amount of time.
What's the timing on the slip lane?
Slip lane, we're waiting on civil site, uh, to get a TDEC approval and then we can start. We've got the T dot permit, just waiting on TDEC approval because we're getting, the slip lane is getting into the stream buffer. That's right there in the intersection. So I'm, no, I'm thinking months.
Months.
Couple of months, yeah.
Before we start or?
Before we start construction and probably a three month construction timeline. So I'm hoping by the end of the year, that'll be.
Hoping by the end of the year?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Uh, Ryan can maybe speak on the timing of the Moss Farm doing the improvements at the, on Bender's Ferry at the intersection.
Timing?
I don't know, but I know they're working through the right away acquisition slow.
Just curious, I'm not that it matters because everything's tied to the CO, but there's.
It's a different engineer on the project now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. And widening of Lebanon Road?
Widening Lebanon Road is the unknown at this point.
Do we have any, any right, right away acquisition cost budgeted, anything? Have we made any?
We've budgeted three million to offer up as a twenty percent match to T dot. But still, that doesn't give any guarantee that T dot is going to fund the remaining amount for right away. Right away, if right away was funded today, it'd probably take about three years to get through right away acquisition. Then you're looking at construction starting four years from now. And probably a two year construction timeline. So if, six years from now, if right away funding was in place today. We just don't know when that right away funding is going to be in the budget, in T dot's budget.
For T dot?
Yeah. That's the unknown.
Do we ask? Do we have an idea?
Well, we know that it wasn't included in their, in their budget this year, so. We have to wait until next year at least unless, I know they just passed the Transportation Modernization Act. Which is a one time transfer from the general front to T dot to, one of the items in that act was improve act acceleration. So between now and December, they're working on that and where they're going to send all that money to what project. So I think we'll have an answer by December if this project, if Lebanon Road gets funded through that Transportation Modernization Act.
Okay, thank you. I get, my question would be, if, for this to be widened, are we going to have to annex this section of roadway?
I would think so. I would think.
So we would, so we would be incurring the responsibility of this section of roadway if we do this?
Yeah, the plan is to annex the, uh, Bender's Ferry Road up to our intersection because of the force main that has to be in that pavement. Um, we sat down with Shane and Andy. They both kind of agree that that's what needs to happen.
So how, how, how many linear feet are we talking about of roadway improvement?
Uh, I think it's a half acre. I'm sorry, half mile.
Half mile, so.
Of road widening, uh, to Maze Chapel.
Right, so that's about, wow, twenty six hundred feet?
Roughly.
And how wide is this road going to be?
Thirty three.
So thirty three. So let's see here.
What's existing with?
I don't know, two lane.
I think it's like twenty feet existing, so thirteen foot widening.
Round in eleven feet.
Twenty two existing.
So in fourteen years, we'll have the responsibility of replacing that road. That's our repaving schedule roughly?
Yeah, fourteen to seventeen years.
Yeah, what's, do we have any ballpark on what that's going to, what we're, what we're volunteering the taxpayers for on this?
I haven't run the numbers, but.
Okay. Question. Commissioner Justice, did you ask for the floor? Not Commissioner Hefner is.
Yeah, quick, you, you bring up a good point. Um, however, wasn't this in the transportation project plan?
Yeah, it's in our comprehensive transportation plan.
So was this not going to get built eventually anyways, using taxpayer money?
Not unless we chose to do it.
I mean, I just assumed if there's no.
There's nothing out there to go to, we wouldn't have the cost.
If it's in the plan.
It's in the plan, but.
Which you voted for. So we were going to, in, in my opinion, it was going to get built anyways.
Be many years from now, but.
It was going to get built. I mean, fifteen is many years. We're not, the city's not incurring the cost to build the road, but we were planning on it. Because it's in the transportation plan.
Mm hmm.
And we would have to incur the cost to repave it. So I'm not, I'm not seeing, not seeing the point, but, um. I see it saving, I see saving a lot of money for the citizens of Mount Joint because the developer is paying to widen the road. That's what I see.
How about this? If you don't annex that far out, you won't need to put a city road out there. How much money does that save?
Not going to stop growth.
We don't have to, we don't have to encourage urban sprawl though. Oh, you can laugh, but here's the thing. I hope it's funny because every one of these lots, if you vote for this, you need to explain to, to your people you represent. You know, it's, we get thirty five dollars per person for state street aid. Uh, the estimated population according to their numbers is six ninety eight. That's going to be, this neighborhood should be generating around twenty four thousand dollars in street aid. But the total cost that we're going to be incurring for maintenance is about two hundred thousand dollars a year in the maintenance costs. When you, when you consider that road to repave is forty one dollars a linear foot. And that needs to be done. I think I got, I put down fourteen. Um, sidewalks, fifty six dollars and twenty cents linear foot, thirty years, needs to be redone. Your coverage. So that, that's why I ask, how much, how much are we going to be on the hook for, for the road? And I know it's on the long term plan, but I don't plan on building a road that's not going to someplace that we don't, we don't have inside the city. We've got a number of projects to take on already as a city. I, I don't understand why we'd intentionally vote to put ourselves behind the eight ball more financially, but that's my two cents. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you. This would, if annex brought in, would be in my district. We established a transportation plan. We've established traffic plans. We have greenway plans. We have plans that have been put in place. We've been trying to go by those plans, um, and, and work through this whole process. One of the things that we have is a transportation plan that took into consideration Bender's Ferry Road. One of the, one of the other issues that we've got, um, as far as our EMS and the plans that we've got out there. And I don't think it's been brought up, but, uh, I think that there was two acres that was being dedicated to the city for future use for a fire hall out there as well. Uh, and I don't, is that been captured anywhere? Do we know? Well, that needs to be captured because that was one of the things that I had asked them for and they agreed readily to do that. And I think we'd agree that there's not a need today for that, but there may be a need five years or even ten years. There's not a reason to just blow it off and not take advantage of, of an opportunity like that, uh, to set us up for the future. Yo, back in two thousand two, two thousand three, we started talking about Providence. And ever since Providence came in here. The, uh, the history has been, the history of, of social media even, the newspapers and, and the history of the people who have lived here for many years is that we ignored the infrastructure. And we just brought in a bunch of homes. I've heard it. I heard it today, last week. You know, you didn't plan, you didn't plan for the infrastructure. You just started building homes and hoped it would come. Uh, I will tell you on Central Pike, I have never voted for a development on Central Pike for this very reason. Because it's a state road and it never got built. It never got widened. Thirty five mile an hour, really bad road, worked a lot of wrecks on it. This gives us an opportunity to go out Bender's Ferry Road, fix that road out there, take a, a sewer line out that road. We get to develop using our controls. We have an encapsulated system out there that's not, we hope anyway, that's not going to dump into Old Hickory Lake or Cedar Creek. We get the roads fixed that were within our traffic plans and we're actually creating the infrastructure before the homes go in. We're not giving any COs until the infrastructure is there. This is what everybody's been asking for, for us to do exactly what we're doing here tonight. So I, I, I'm having a hard time voting against this because I know what will happen and they will go to the county. And anybody who says that the county is not going to approve it or they're going to approve it with conditions, you go look at the last three that they approved out there after we turned them down. Again, look at the history. They've been turned down. We turned them down. They went to the county. They got approved. No road improvements, no sewer. So why in the world would we continue to do the same thing over and over and over again? I mean, that's, you know, the definition of insanity, if you would, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result every time. I, I'm. Having a hard time because, like I said, I've been hearing for many years since Providence came in, y'all need to do the infrastructure first. We're doing the infrastructure. That's what this whole meeting is about. Then the homes can go. That's what this whole meeting is about. That's what we're planning for. You helped develop this plan, Mayor. You were right in there with us developing this plan. Were you not? You voted against it?
You're, you're mixing the two between the traffic, the long term traffic plan, which. No one up here is obligated to vote for anything on a traffic plan. If you don't have a destination for a road. You're creating, uh, you're creating a neighborhood there just to connect the road to it. Then you're sitting there looking at me going, um, you voted for this plan. Why not do it? Because it doesn't make sense to approve the neighborhood first and you won't have to put it there, but carry on.
Okay, when you use the same, same logic, if we go up to, up here to Providence Central. You're, you're going out here and throwing money into a road and, and putting a bunch of apartments up there. I voted against it because that doesn't, does not even increase the size of the road. We've at least got, if the Lebanon Road doesn't get put in place, we're widening Golden Bear. Where it's going to, was it five lanes if I'm not mistaken? And we'll tie into the reverse L that takes us all the way to the interstate at that location. So Lebanon Road is not something that is absolute that they need to have, but they are also, we've got offsite road improvements that have been paid for by other developments. Thomason Hills and the others to make those right hand turns off of Bender's Ferry Road onto Lebanon Road and to take it all the way across and increase the signal head at that location. So that you've actually got four lanes of traffic. That's the infrastructure. That's stuff that we have been doing. That nobody's paid any attention to, but we've been doing that. Y'all have all voted on it. Now it's time we put it all together. This is where the infrastructure comes in. Then we get the homes after the infrastructure, the infrastructure is improved. It's what's supposed to have happened many years ago. Let's make it happen now.
Uh, I'm glad you brought up Central Pike and talking about investing in that. Um, just to clarify, so everybody understands when you invest in Central Pike as a city, it's a one time thing? You're investing in a state road, meaning the state of Tennessee takes over the maintenance for that road? We're going to be investing in a city road, meaning the taxpayers, the other thirty eight thousand nine hundred and some odd people that won't be using this road. Will be on the hook for paying for, uh, vice mayor.
Mayor, thank you. Um. I've been sitting here quietly. Uh, I've, I've actually met, met up with the developers multiple times on this project. Um, I've talked over with different staff members. I, I definitely see both sides. Um, and it is challenging because, you know, at the same time, we got residents that are currently out there that are driving on a road that we listened to several meetings back that they talked about how it's unsafe. And how the county needs to clean it up and fix it. And we all know the county is not going to if the county takes it over. We, you know, we all know that. And I do understand that if the city is on the hook for any type of road improvements, then, you know, then that's kind of the city's responsibility as well. So it is challenging up here. It's a fifty fifty, you know, I mean, I, you know, I, I see both sides of it. Um, and at the same time, I also look at, uh, that these projects that right now this, this developer is, is presenting something to the city. That I've, I've, I've not seen in three years, first of all. And I do see what Commissioner, uh, Malali was discussing earlier where her confusion was, where, you know, she thought it was one acre lots. Uh, but there's so much common space in here, you know, just undeveloped. You know, and, and you think about that. Let's just say like most of these, you know, developers, they come in, they've got fifty acres. And they do that bare minimum. They do the bare minimum of what the city requires them to do. They give them exactly what the city wants, which is the least amount of land that's common space that's left there for the end users. And when I sat down with these developers, folks, I'm going to tell you right now, I was waiting for Ashton Kutcher to jump out of the, you know, the, you know, like the curtains and be like, hey, you know, we got you. And I'm serious. It, it, it is that funny because it, it's something that I've never seen before. I've never seen a project where you've got this much land and it's cut in half. And these are nice homes from what I'm being seen, you know, being told, shown, and the lot sizes are decent. They are, and, and, and it is very challenging up here because at the same time, it's, it, you know, Mayor, I mean, you nailed it. The numbers, they don't add up and it's not fair to the taxpayers either. It's not. So. You go back to this, okay? The residents that are there, they're stuck with roads that they barely get any type of safety on. Um, we have an option where a developer is going to go ahead and fix the roads in many areas, not all of it, but the majority of it. They're going to give us safety lights. They're going to give us, um, you know, feasible lanes. They're going to work around the construction. They're giving us a lot of green space, which if you look at the city of Mount Juliet, there is a lot of trees. But as these developers are coming in, which I'm, I'm being stuck right now with Kane Brick, which is, uh, you know, the backend of my development and it's in the county. And we have no authority over them. And here it is, we are basically shoving them at the end of the corners, you know, in the back of our subdivision. And they have no, uh, emergency service with the city. Zero. I've sat down with those developers. I, I, I sat down with them multiple times, done everything I could to, you know, to get them, you know, to consider it. Our city manager, our commissioner, or well, you know, at the time, vice mayor, now mayor, uh, I mean, it's just, again, uh, it is very challenging. Um, and I'm on the fence up here, trying to listen to both sides. And, uh, I, I, I just wanted to, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here quietly, listening back and forth and gentlemen, I, I, you know, I appreciate both, both sides of it. But, uh, I guess we'll see, you know, once we call us to vote. So thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Lele.
Did we capture, sorry, in first reading that the gate would be removed? Did we capture, sorry, in first reading that the gate would be removed? Did we, was that put in as a condition?
I'm not showing that one was ever added.
I couldn't remember if Andy had spoke about that in his, he had a separate list at the first reading. I know it was discussed, but I don't know if it was ever like a motion made.
I don't think so.
All right, um, because I think there with this many homes, there needs to be a second location. So if that wasn't captured, I would like to motion to have that be a not gated, right? That would be a second in and out. There would no gate.
Is that a second?
Yes.
So it's second on a, to ensure that there's no gate. I think it was a crash gate that was talked about.
We talked about this during the first, first time.
Yeah, I know we talked about it, but I didn't know if it was added.
Well, we're taking it completely out, so it was a wide open, that we go down.
The motion is to?
It was just captured at this point that it's not going to be in any crash gate or any gate of any kind.
Yeah. And that would be a second in and out to the neighborhood.
How about Polcat, Polcat being an obstructed second entrance?
How about what's that again?
Polcat will be an unobstructed second entrance.
Secondary entrance.
Yes.
Is that good? Good? Any objections to that? And then we'll adopt it as our fourth amendment.
All right. And also would like to motion that as long as it's within the existing right of way, that a northbound on Benders Ferry, a northbound right turn lane be added on Benders, on to Maze. And then a southbound left turn lane on Benders, turning on to Maze, since this is going to be a second.
You're asking for turn lanes on Maze Chapel?
Not.
Oh, Benders Ferry.
Yeah, Benders Ferry. Yeah, a right turn lane on to Maze. And then a southbound left turn lane on Benders, turning on to Maze, since this is going to be a second entrance. And then also the left turn lane on Maze. Onto Benders. Does that make sense? Three. Westbound.
A westbound turn lane on Maze.
Yeah. So three turn lanes there at the intersection.
So are we going to have to?
As long as it's within the, as long as it's within the existing right of way. You don't think what? Okay. Okay. Well, whatever we can get in the existing right of way. So the motion would be?
Please help me.
Okay. So you don't think the northbound right turn lane would be? Mm-hmm. Okay.
So if you're putting three lanes in, that's going to include your turn lane automatically, correct? Left turn lane, but.
I don't.
You don't think there's any justification for this?
If it's the quicker route into the neighborhood, I haven't run a, a timing route. People drive the quickest way they can. So I haven't done an analysis on which way is quicker to turn right on Maze and go through Polcat or to just continue straight on Benders and turn into. According to their traffic study, majority of the traffic is going to their main entrance on Benders.
But once the additional phases get built out, I mean, you've got people building, living in the back, it'd be quicker for them to come out Polcat onto Maze.
I think that just tees right into the main drag anyway. It, it, it just tees into the main drag. So it's, I don't know. It's almost a half a dozen one way and six the other, depending on how you wind up.
Well, what do you think?
The majority of your, of the homes are going to be built past that. So you really could have a fifty-fifty almost.
Would there be any recommendations for any turn lanes there at the intersection at all?
Yeah, turn lanes always create an improvement. So I think so. Anytime you add a turn lane to a existing road, you're, you're improving that roadway.
And that's a secondary entrance?
I'm not sure what they'll require. They usually only require improvements at the direct point where you connect to their existing road. So that's kind of an indirect connection.
We have annexed stuff in the past where we couldn't get it approved to the county.
Yeah.
ACLD cells, turn lanes. Rutland Road, Chandler Radford Road.
Yeah, there's been times when they wouldn't allow an improvement.
We're going to do it on Beckwith or Bradshaw Farms as well. There's three, and that's, that's with my very poor memory. Get your mic on.
Yeah. We've got a traffic study. Why don't we let the staff, planning staff do this and then bring it back to the planning commission for approval rather than us trying to engineer it here at the table? I think you'd let them bring it back for the FMDP. I, I think it would work better if you want to do it that way. And I mean, I'll second you on that if you want to.
So you're asking to withdraw the motion? I don't know that it was ever seconded.
No, I seconded it.
Okay, so I will, no objection, then we'll withdraw that.
Nope.
All right. All right, back on the ordinance says amended four times by my count. Are we ready to vote? Well, I give my last comments, which is I don't, I don't think the road needs to, should be widened and inside the city on Benders Ferry, because I don't think there's, it's, it's a financial obligation that we need to ask the taxpayers to take, take on to expand this. Just the cost of the maintenance on the roads, sidewalks, curbs and others, that that density is just, the homes do not cover their own cost on that. We're going to be sending, we're going to be sending our emergency services further outside the city. And then that takes away from our existing city that we're already asking them to cover the cost of this neighborhood that doesn't cash flow for us as a city. So I, I can't support this, but all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. So that passes with a vote of three to two as amended four times. All right. Our next item on the agenda is an ordinance, annexing the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 12 acres, property known as New Tribe Church, located on 260 Clemens Road, map 72, parcel 74, and located within the city's urban growth boundary. Have a motion? Is there a second? All second. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries by a vote of five to zero. And then that was 11A1. If I said nine, I was having a flashback from the last one. Uh, the next item is 11A2, an ordinance to amend part B of the Unified Development Code of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as Zoning Regulations Ordinance 200129, adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Article 6 Commercial Districts Regulation 6102A to allow takeout restaurants and CNS commercial neighborhood services. All motion? Got a second? Any questions or comments on 112A? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. 11A3, an ordinance to rezone approximately nineteen point nine four acres of property at Rutland Drive, map 78, parcel thirteen point four, thirteen point one four, from CI to CI PUD and adopt the preliminary master development plan and approve the economic development agreement for Project Prosper. Have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments on this one? I'll point out the applicant did ask for deferral on it. We ready to vote? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to reserve funds for a police department headquarters building and a fire hall for the city of Mount Juliet. Have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by, all in favor, uh, all in favor, and we got Commissioner Hefner.
Is this, I guess I'm questioning whether this is even necessary. Is this something that, are we just? The big concern I, I have is we were using ten million or stating in this resolution that we're using relief fund money that was, that we've already reported to the federal government that we used it for payroll, which we did. And that was one of the, one of the, one of the items that we could have used that for. Now we've, now we're going to pass a resolution that's saying we're going to be using it for something different than what we reported to the federal government. I've got a problem with that.
Maybe reporting the funds twice is a good way to double our revenue. Is that how it works?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. So I mean, Commissioner Hefner's made his statement to his, I guess the issue you have with this, I mean, we did report this as spin on salaries.
Yes. I think the intent is this to reserve the offset that we didn't spend on payroll.
Correct.
On the, to reserve it for a PD and the fire hall. The only thing is the, the fire, the PD is in the budget this year.
Right.
Um, so it's already budgeted. The, and the, if you say you're going to use the funds for that, you might not want to do that if you're wanting to borrow because it might benefit you to borrow more than use reserves for that. So that was the only question I had is do you want to maybe give up the borrowing for the reserve for the funds?
Correct. The other issue.
My other snag on this was while we're pointing out snags, a seven million for the police department and three million to replace the current station three. Possibility we won't need the three million on station three. I just, just assumed if we got that lucky, we'd just amend this or this resolution to send it all to police, but.
Mr. Justice? I, I think, and I'm not sure, I apologize for having looked at to see where this came from, but I appreciate the thought that went into, to trying to direct it. And because I mean, it, that kind of gets a little obscure for us sometimes when we've got disordinance and this and this resolution, this resolution. So whoever put that up there, thank you. I don't know where it came from, but I have to think probably what we need to do is we need to sit down, we already know what we've put into the budget this year for the capital improvements and the capital projects. So let's just sit down and make a list of what it's going to cost us and we know what's coming out. So we actually have that in front of us. I'm, I'm kind of a visual guy. So it's a little tough for me sometimes to, well, it's in the budget. Well, yeah, so a hundred and thirty thousand other line items. So I mean, I do need to see that stuff. So I mean, that thought process is, is helpful. But we, we need to go through, we need to have that list. And I don't think we've ever done that to sit down and say, this is what we're going to pay towards this and, and how this is going to be paid for. One of the things I always appreciated about Mayor Hagerty, he was kind of a, he was kind of a funding person. He was really into the finances and he was very good at it. And he always wanted, all right, if you're going to spend seven million dollars, let's figure out where that seven million is coming from that is new, not just an old revenue source. And he always looked at that and I kind of picked that up from him. Let's try and find it, you know, to, to help fund it. So if we could do that, show where we got revenue streams coming in to help fund, I, I think that would help us as we go through the budget, budget processes and even the budget amendments through the rest of this next year. Just a thought.
I'm, I might suggest maybe wording and saying an equivalent offset of what we received from the recovery funds. Maybe that would make it a tad more kosher. And maybe adding language and less offset, unless, unless bonded. And would that cover our basis?
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking. Would you be amenable to defer this meeting and then maybe work on the language? Since we have, since we haven't voted on it, just defer it and work on the language and bring it back?
Second.
One meeting? All right. All in favor of deferral for one meeting signify by saying aye. That is deferred. And then the last 11B2, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate with the purchase price of property located at 115 Clemens Road, old SNS building, if approved in the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. It's a, it's under our city manager's sponsorship. I'll recognize him first and come right back to you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. This is just formality, just part of our process that before I could proceed with making an offer, I get the direction from the commission that is truly your desire. I go back with the property owners, negotiate a price that they're willing to accept, bring that back to the commission in the form of a contract.
Commissioner Justice?
Because of the fact that Kenny Martin is as nice and wonderful as he is and seems to come by you on a regular basis, probably goes to business league there at night, he is the worst negotiator in the world. He wants, he wants to, if they're, if they're asking nine million, Kenny wants to give him nine million and a dollar just because he's that nice. I probably would, we've got a, how much was that? Can you come back on the appraisal and it was nine million?
Sorry. Yes, it was eight point eight to nine million.
Okay, all right. I still think it was a little inflated. And I know that you had already talked to the owner of that property. So I'm, I'm going to, I'm hopefully when you go after and go talk to him and start trying to negotiate that, take into consideration, you know, there's going to have to be quite a bit of money put into that thing. I think Commissioner Trevette, Vice Mayor Trevette had three fifty, four hundred thousand somewhere in there. So it's going to have to be used to adapt that to our purposes for public courts. Correct. So that should also be taken into consideration when you start doing negotiations on that property that we're, if you do that, we're going to have to come up with another budget amendment. And I'm like, I'm not going to be favored that at all. So.
Yeah, also, we're not paying a, he's not paying a commission on this.
No, sir.
Okay, so, so you can take four percent right off the top right there that he, that he's saving.
Okay.
So.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor of 11B2, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Uh, the next item on our agenda is adjournment. If there's no objection, we will adjourn. Hearing no objection, we return. Going back to the beach.